And then broadcasting.
Good evening. This is Andy Port. I'm the Director of Planning and Development for the City of Newburyport. I'm the Zoom moderator and technical host for tonight's meeting. The, there is an option for the general public who's here tonight and applicants, if need be, to raise your hand. There's the raise hand feature in Zoom. If you go to the bottom of the screen and move your cursor to click that raise hand button. As indicated on the screen, the, the chair, I will call upon you and let you speak at the appropriate time. So with that, I'll leave it to the chair to run the meeting as normal.
Okay. Thank you very much, Andy, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is Rob Champetti, Chairman of the Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals, and we're going to jump into our meeting scheduled for this evening, May 26. And obviously, as Andy just pointed out, it will be done virtually and, and if there's any questions just along the way, just feel free to click the button at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand and we'll, we'll acknowledge you and Andy will be able to unmute your mic so that whomever wishes to speak is able to speak. We're going to begin by going through the agenda and just as an FYI, everything that's on the agenda is also linked to materials, supporting materials for each application, as well as the, the items that are on the business meeting, the minutes and all, all supporting documentations, plans and other materials. So if you are following along remotely to this meeting and you wish to click on to materials, Andy Port will be as the moderator, he'll be putting up everything that's being referenced or spoken about, but you're also able to do that independently by just going to the city's website and clicking on the agenda, then click on to the application that interests you and the materials will be there in PDF for you to review. So noting the time is now 7:03, we are, we are published to begin at seven o'clock. So we're going to begin by calling the role. The way this will work remotely normally when we're in a room, we, we enlist the help of, of our Secretary, Mr. Moore, to call the role, but here I'm just going to read through our list of members and each member who is in attendance, please respond by simply saying aye. And once we have a quorum, we can move into the business meeting. I'll go over the sequence of how the meetings run just before we start our first public hearing. But first, we're going to call the role, then we'll have a business meeting where we approve the minutes. There's nothing else on our business meeting, so we can go right into public hearings from there. Okay, calling the role for the Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals, meeting for May 26, 2020. Mr. Cameron?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Delaw?
Here.
Ms. Webb? Looks like Rachel Webb's not, is Rachel Webb, is Rachel logged on yet, Andy? Can you tell? Andy, can you hear me?
Yeah, I don't see her at present, but I will notify you if she does join for any reason and you don't notice it. Yep.
I thought I saw it. I thought I saw it pop up. Okay, apologies. So we'll, we'll circle back on Rachel. We're reporting not here at the moment. Mr. Swanton?
Here.
And Mr. Chaney?
Here.
And Rob Champetti, Chairman here. So we have, one, two, three, four, we have six in attendance and Rachel Webb yet to, to log on. So we have a quorum. Just noting for the, for the record, we, if we need to have an alternate vote, I believe Mr. Chaney was our alternate last meetings. I mean, I believe that Mr. Swanton was our alternate voting at the last meeting. So this meeting, Mr. Chaney will be our voting member. Moving along, then we have the business meeting, approval of the minutes. The minutes have been published and are all, I think, in our inbox and available to the members of the public that are listening as well via the city's website. Minutes of the meeting of 5:12. Do we have any questions, changes, anything that, that needs attention? Hearing no responses. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
And we'll reapprove the minutes. This is Ken Swanton.
Mark Moore seconded.
Okay, motions made by Mr. Swanton and seconded by Mr. Moore. Calling the role and you can just respond in the affirmative by saying aye. Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Delaw?
Aye.
Mr. Swanton?
Aye, but actually I think I should be voting or moving the motion. Should I?
Oh, you can. This is, these are, this is the business meeting. So you, it's only the public hearings that you're either a voting alternate or a non, or, or a, a non-voting alternate, but you.
Thank you.
Yeah. And Mr. Chaney?
Aye.
And Rob Champetti, I vote aye. All the motion carries and the minutes are approved. So we can move along to our public hearings. And before we do that, I'm going to just take a quick moment and introduce the members of the board, the members of the public that are here. It's, it's, it's a little bit obtuse because, you know, obviously no one can see anyone and you have to look at a list of participants to understand, you know, where you are and who else is, is here. But we'll do a quick introduction of the board and then I'll walk through the quick format of how the meeting will be run and then we'll jump right into business. So the members in attendance that you've heard from, Mr. Ed Cameron is our Vice Chair, Mr. Moore, our Secretary, Mr. Delaw, voting member, Rachel Webb, who hasn't logged on just yet, but is also voting, a voting member, though she's absent at the moment. Mr. Swanton, an alternate, will be sitting out this hearing and Mr. Chaney, an alternate, will be our, our voting alternate. My name is Rob Champetti and I'm the chairman. And so the way these meetings will work, for those of you who are not familiar with ZBA or other Newburyport city hearings and, and, you know, public hearings and meetings, we will go into the public hearing section. We will start each application in the sequence shown on the agenda. We'll read the, the name of the application by name of the applicant, as well as the street address, and then just the description that's on the agenda as to what is being applied for of the ZBA, at which point we will then open up the floor to the applicant, the applicant or the applicant's representative or engineer, attorney, architect, or all of the above, will then make the presentation to the board of their application, at which point, at, at the point at which they are completed, we then move to the, the audience section or the public hearing section where I will ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in support of the application. We'll then move to anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application. And in either situation, we just ask that you kindly give your name and your address for our minute taker, who's Ms. Gretchen Joy. I'll also note that in attendance is Andy Port, our, our city planner, I'm sorry, our, our planning director, and we also have Caitlin Sullivan in attendance, our city planner. So if you can just give your first name and last name and your address for Ms. Joy to keep the minutes, that would be great. If you're not sure whether you're in support of or in opposition to an application, just please pick one and, and feel free to, to share your thoughts. Make sure that your voice is heard, your comments are received by the board members. It doesn't matter which section you choose to speak in, as long as you feel free to choose to speak, if that's what you wish to do. We'll then go to questions from the board. This is the section of the hearing when we, when the members of the board will ask questions of either the applicant or the applicant's representatives. They will also, having heard folks who may have spoken in support or in opposition to an application, they will use that as a platform to, to carry forward those questions in the form of a board member's question to the applicant or whomever. So for members of the public, feel, feel free to note that your questions are taken into account very seriously and we try to envelop them by, by passing them forward if, if it raises questions in the minds of any of the members of the board. After the questions from the board, we close that section of the hearing. We go to deliberations. Deliberations are really essentially where you get to listen to us think out loud. In the spirit of full transparency and, and full, full, open meeting, we, we discuss the matters, we ponder and contemplate and question ourselves, each other, maybe further questions of members of the application, members that have, that have presented in favor of an application. This is where the board members deliberate the, the legal standard by which they have to make a decision. At the close of that, the, the board will then move to a vote. Under the Roberts Rules of Order, all, all motions to, to vote are made in the affirmative. So a motion will sound like a motion to approve, you know, XYZ. That doesn't necessarily mean that member is voting that way. It's just how Roberts Rules has us frame it, at which point the motion must be seconded and then it goes to a full roll call. I call the role and in the, for the application to prevail, it has to have at least four members voting in the affirmative. And I believe that's it. So we, we can move on now to the public hearing section and we will go to the first application that's on our agenda. And I believe that we have two, the first two that are being continued to our next meeting. And Caitlin, can you just confirm on 468th Street? Do we, we have a request from the applicant, Ryan McShara, Red Barn Architecture, to continue that to the next meeting of six, is it 68?
Um, it, let's see, 69.
Oh, sorry. That's right, 69. Okay. Does, is there anyone here from, from that application that wishes to speak or may the board just, just move toward a motion to continue that matter on the request?
Mr. Chair, we have no one in the audience who's raised a hand, but I believe the request is sufficient.
Okay, so we'll, we'll move then. Do we have a motion to continue the application of 468th Street, special permit for non-conformities to the meeting of 69?
So moved by Ed Cameron.
Seconded, Mark Moore.
Motion's made by Ed Cameron and seconded by Mr. Moore. Let's see. Mr. Cameron? We just need a yea. Thank you. Sorry, sorry about that.
I'll be more astute.
That's okay. So calling the role, we have Mr. Cameron, Mr. Cameron votes yea. Mr. Moore?
Yea.
Mr. Delaw?
Yea.
And let me just see, is Rachel here? Ah, Ms. Webb is in attendance. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chaney?
Yes.
Rob Champetti votes yes, seven, seven in the affirmative. The motion carries and matters continue to the meeting of 69. Moving on to the second matter on the agenda, Redco Construction, Inc., care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa on 3-5 School Street. This also is a, a request to continue to the meeting of 69. I see that Attorney Mead is, is here, but I'll just ask the quick question. Attorney Mead, do you wish to, to speak at all or may we just proceed with a, with a role call on the motion?
You may proceed. Thank you for asking.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so do we have a motion to continue the matter of 35 School Street to the meeting of 69?
So moved, Ed Cameron.
Seconded, Mark Moore.
Motion's made by Mr. Cameron and seconded by Mr. Moore. We'll call the role and just respond in the affirmative or in the negative. Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delaw?
Yeah.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Swanton? Oh, Mr. Swanton, sorry about that. Mr. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Champetti, I vote yes, seven in the affirmative. The motion carries and matters continue to 69. Moving now to the first substantive matter that's on our agenda that appears to be going forward. That is the application of Michael J. Gray, 12 Harrison Street, docket 2020-037, a special permit for non-conformities. The applicant seeks to, the applicant is applying for renovations and alterations to include reverting pre-existing non-conforming two-family home to a single family and replacing the Gambro roofline and L at the rear at a higher elevation. May we hear from the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mark Griffin, I'm an attorney at Ferren and Nicholson, 30 Green Street, Newburyport, Mass., representing Michael Gray in this application for a special permit for non-conformities. So this application has to do with a property. Obviously, it's on 12 Harrison Street. It is an existing two-family home and it's in the DCOD and also in the R2 zoning district. The home is in, I would say, poor condition. It is, however, an historic home, built in or about 1750 to 1800 and is contributing to the Newburyport Historic District. It's located on a pre-existing legally non-conforming lot and it's situated on that lot, which has almost 8,000 square feet of lot area. 15,000 is required, so the lot is pre-existing non-conforming for that two-family use. It has 138 feet of street frontage, which is significant for that district and more than is required for a two-family use actually, because 120 is needed. It's also legally non-conforming with respect to two of the setbacks. So the front, actually more than two of the setbacks, but there's only two in issue at this application. So front is three feet where 25 is required and the rear is 6.8 where 25 is required and the northeasterly side setback is 12.7 where 20 is required. It meets all other dimensional requirements. The proposal here is actually to go from a two-family to a one-family use. So basically minimizing the impact and removing one dwelling unit. That will be done in the interior. Everything is essentially within the existing footprint, the construction that's being done. The roofline originally, with the original plans that were on file, was proposed to be raised by three feet on the, on the Gambrel roof and also the L. And that was going to be expanded upward over what exists. And the upward over what exists would have, would require a special permit for non-conformities because of the intensification of the front and rear setback. So the original plan was filed with the Newburyport Historical Commission because they had jurisdiction over the roofline change. And so your, the zoning board, first zoning board hearing was continued in order to have the Historical Commission rule on this. As noted in the staff report that was generated by the planning office, the Historical Commission at their last hearing voted to release this from, for, for the demolition permit. But it was released based on the amended plans. So the petitioner made some significant aesthetic changes to the exterior, none of which affect the footprint of the, of the proposal, but much to do with the exterior. And the architect Barry Gannick is here this evening and he can describe some of those changes that were made. And the roofline also was lowered from three feet to a one and a half foot increase. So basically, this is a one and a half foot raising of the roof above non-conforming setbacks. No additional non-conformity being created going outside the existing footprint. Also, part of the construction is a garage shed slash garage that's existing now will be removed and replaced by a, a new garage, which complies with dimensional zoning, so does not require any additional permitting. This is, I mentioned in the DCOD, but based on the fact that we're not removing exterior building walls, the DCOD was not triggered for this, for this application. And at this point, I think I'll, if Barry Gannick is here, I think I'll turn it over to him to just describe the petitioner's plan for a moment, then come back to me and I'll, I'll wrap up.
Okay. This is Barry Gannick. I'm here, Gannick Architects, One River Road in Carlisle, Mass. And the intent on this project is to renovate this building and restore it to an attractive, lower density use, obviously, with the single family. We are working within the existing footprint of the main house. And in fact, we are reducing somewhat by removing the fire escape that was on the back of the house and not very attractive. And, and that's the key. The whole building will be much more suitable to the neighborhood, much more of an asset, certainly in appearance and value to the, to the town. We're restoring materials that weren't there. The rooflines are very important that we are replacing the Gambrel forms that had been there but had been removed. Yes, as you can see on this drawing, on both the front main part of the original house and the rear wing that we are restoring. Like materials, clavoured siding, new windows will be six over six as shown in this drawing. Making the house much more substantial, repairing foundations where we have to and even reinforcing areas that didn't need quite as much work. It's an asset to the whole town and the neighborhood, certainly. That's pretty much it.
So, Mr. Chairman, it's Mark Griffin again. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah. Go, go ahead.
I'm still unmuted. Great. So again, this is a special permit for non-conformities and, you know, under the criteria, under section 9B2A of zoning ordinance, the applicant needs to show that there's no addition of a new non-conformity. And as you've seen from the, the plans, there has been no addition of new non-conformity. There's no invasion of any pre-existing non-conforming setback, staying within the existing footprint, although extending upward from the non-conforming setback. And then number two, what we need to also prove is that the change won't be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or use. Well, I think both the use and the structure are going to be improved by this project. So first of all, the use currently is a two-family. It's going down to a one-family, so significantly less impact there, less issues with traffic coming in and going, and less issues with the potential of parking on street. And so with respect to the structure itself, you heard from Mr. Gannick and you can see the rendering and also the exterior, you know, elevation drawings. And you can see that this is actually going to be an improvement from what is there now. And so aesthetics aside, you're also going to see an improvement in the dimensional aspects of this property. And that is a little bit quirky, but it's because we're going from a two-family to a one-family use and therefore the dimensional requirements are decreased. And so the lot area is going to be less, less non-conforming, going down from lot area requirement, I should say, less non-conforming. So going from 15,000 to 10,000 and then the side setbacks reduced from 20 to 10, which actually, you know, by happenstance brings the northeasterly setback into conforming. So clearly making this property, you know, more conforming. This, you know, construction is not something that's going to have a significant amount of impact on, or adverse impact on neighboring properties. I'd point out that none of the, none of the neighbors have showed up in opposition to any of this throughout the Historical Commission and we believe that none will be opposing this this evening as well. So for all of the foregoing reasons, we submit that this is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing use or structure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Griffin. Again, Chairman Rob Champetti. We are now, the section will ask anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in support of the application. And again, please just give your name and address for Ms. Joy, the note taker. Anyone wish to speak in support? Seeing no hands up. Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? I see two hands up. Andy, do you want to?
Sure. First off, Stephanie Nikotek.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you, Chair Champetti. So this is the Benjamin Lund House. As noted, it is contributory to the Newburyport Historic District and not all buildings unfortunately have a Form B, but this one was fine enough when the Newburyport Historic District was being created for it to get, actually get a, an inventory Form B, where it's called a fine example of a Georgian house. It is visible, publicly visible from both the street and the rail trail. The, the, you know, I will leave aside comments about what kind of condition it is, is in as an original building. But I oppose raising the roof even one and a half feet. And I oppose roof decks, which are, which detract from its historical significance. If you note, so it's, it's true, this is, there were not, there was not enough demolition for this to be a D-COD special permit, but it was a demolition delay. And it's notable to me that all of the, there were two public hearings for this. Both of them were under the pandemic conditions of Zoom meetings. And if you read the two memos you got from the Historical Commission, the chairman notes that this was, this was a, it was a factor in how this went with that commission. In the second public hearing, Attorney Griffin was introduced. He argued with the commission over their, their authority under demolition delay to make decisions about anything. And even though Mr. Port argued back, what the, what the Historical Commission heard was that they really had nothing to say here. And I, I believe that's the reason that they simply, you know, just said, okay, we, we release this for demolition delay in the, in the areas involved, which were the roofline, even though their purview under demolition delay covered much more. So I think that the, the memos you, you've gotten from the Historical Commission contain additional recommendations from them, which are now not specified conditions, which they could have been if they had imposed demolition delays. So I hope that you will seriously consider their other recommendations. And I have to say, I disagree with the release of the demolition delay for raising the roof of this house, one and a half feet and for roof decks, which really are not appropriate to building with this history. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Patricia Pecknick.
Patricia Pecknick for Dove Street. Can you hear me?
We, we can, Ms. Pecknick.
Thank you. Yes, something to think about on this proposal is that, you know, coastal New England cities have been struggling with this issue of roof decks in historic neighborhoods. For example, Newport, Rhode Island permits them on restaurant and hotel properties in the commercial waterfront district, but not in residential areas of 18th and 19th century houses. And I think that makes a lot of sense from a planning perspective. Portsmouth learned the hard way that street front decks created a lot of visual clutter on the streetscape. They kind of loom down. And so they now don't allow decks at focal points or when visible from a public way. They consider decks a late, you know, 20th century intrusion into these neighborhoods and substantially more detrimental than either an open or an enclosed porch. Decks like this provide a private benefit, but I would argue at a public cost. So although direct debutters have not objected, the public user, the public users of the rail trail might, it's been very difficult to gauge that sort of thing because of this remote format. But I think the city invested a lot of labor and money into installing these privacy fences all along the rail trail. And so to begin to permit decks to line the trail will have a strong impact there. Of more concern than the rear deck on the highly visible elevation there is the deck sitting right on Harrison Street. I don't think we've seen this in the DCOD. I can't imagine that decks fronting High Street or Federal Street would be permitted. And I don't consider Harrison Street any less special a place than, than those streets. If, if this is the direction that the city wants to take on decks, then, then so be it. But please consider not approving this time something that you might not want to approve, you know, 50 more times. I, I think that Newburyport with street fronting roof decks would be a very different place. And I just ask that you stop to visualize what that would look like. Finally, I have a lot of respect for the work that you're doing, especially in these remote meetings, which are terribly difficult. And I wish you the best in your deliberations on this application. Thanks for the chance to speak.
Thank you very much, much, Ms. Pecknick. Is there, it looks like there's another hand, Andy?
Yes, we have Glenn, I believe, Richards. Is that right? Yes, we have Glenn, I believe, Richards. Is that right?
Yes. Yeah, Glenn Richards, 6 Kent Street, and also Chair of the Historical Commission. Wanted to just mention a couple of words since the hearings at the Historical Commission came up. Unfortunately, I did send a report or generated a couple of reports, which I shared with the chair. I don't know if you folks had a chance to review them. The, a little bit of complicated situation. But anyway, the bottom line is, you know, we were, we took a look, and I'm speaking here more for myself, I'm not really speaking for the commission. But I think most of the commission had similar feelings that this house, as you can see from, if you look at the plans of the existing, it was very unfortunately dealt some pretty nasty blows renovation-wise when it was converted to a family, and you know, the roof line was really massacred and all that. So, you know, we look at the existing, we look at the proposed. At the first, you know, the first hearing, there were some, there were some odd things that we discussed with Mr. Gray, I believe it is the owner. And he was very, one of the things that encouraged us, it was that he was very willing to work with the Historical Commission and accommodate our suggestions to improve his design. So that was good. But partly as a result of that, when he came back a second time, we were frankly kind of shocked that, although in the first hearing, you know, we kind of, we didn't flatly rule out roof decks, but we spoke out, you know, kind of cautioned against them. And from the first plan to the second plan, the roof deck, there was an additional roof deck that wasn't even there in the first plan. So that was rather shocking. Anyway, you know, so we're trying to balance the, you know, the fact that a lot of the work that the applicant is doing does, you know, I wouldn't contradict what the architect and Attorney Griffin has said, that in fact, it does improve the lines. I do, you know, we definitely had some concerns about raise, taking that gamble roof and raising it three feet. Yeah, so it was my preference. I'd prefer not to raise it at all. I'm not sure if that was necessitated by the whole roof tech thing. I suspect it was necessitated by wanting to get more use out of the third floor. You know, a lot of these old houses kind of had a very, it was really a garret or an attic in the third floor, not a full use floor. At any rate, long story short, we felt that on balance, we had made a lot of suggestions. He adopted our suggestions. He was willing to take the suggestions we made at the second meeting about the width of the corner boards. And now little details that would make it more authentically blend in. But I would echo Ms. Pecknick's comments, she's also in the Historical Commission, that, you know, the roof decks, we really have reservations about those. They are very visible from the rail trail. And the one on the left-hand side as it faces the front will be quite this old from Harrison Street as well. So, you know, I would echo her comments about the appropriateness of those. It just, and also the comments about setting a precedent that we might not want to do. So I'll leave it up to you folks to weigh that one. But that, but my whole point in speaking is to kind of try to explain our rationale and why we did decide to allow the project to go forward despite, you know, some of these various reservations. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. Let's see, were there any other hands, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition or speak at all with respect to this application? Any new hands seeing none? Okay, then we'll move on to the next segment of the hearing, questions from the board. Anyone of the members of the ZBA wish to pose any questions of either Attorney Griffin or Mr. Gannock, the architect, or any other questions, feel free to jump in.
For the record, that Mark Griffin is also raising his hand. He may have some answers to questions and comments that were raised previously.
Okay.
This is Ed Cameron. Could I go?
May I speak? Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
You can answer this one as well, as whatever you were going to say. Could the architect or Attorney Griffin just talk about why the roof line needs to be raised from an architectural perspective? Are you trying to get more headroom in there somewhere?
Yes, this is Barry Gannick. It's for exactly that, for headroom inside.
May I speak to some of the comments that were made? This is Mark, this is Mark Griffin. So I did mention that, you know, that we hadn't had any opposition from the neighborhood. And even though we had some opposition, I was correct, it's not from the neighborhood. Obviously, none of the three people that spoke live nearby or are in the neighborhood. That being said, you know, whether the board, or excuse me, the commission has reservations about what they approved is really not relevant once they've approved it. You could say the same thing with the zoning board of appeals. After you voted, that's your approval. So I might point out of the two commission members that spoke tonight, you know, one of them voted yes. So, you know, this was a roof line change that didn't actually get approved in a vacuum. It got approved in addition to the applicant making a significant number of other exterior changes. And if you look at the Historical Commission report on the approval vote, you'll see what was, what was done and what was agreed to. So although the roof decks remained, significant other aesthetic changes were made from the first plan to the second. And, you know, the report itself said that basically, since the applicant expressed willingness to consider recommendations by the commission, designed to make the project results more historically accurate and period appropriate, the motion was made to allow the project. And so, you know, they may have reservations now. I would respectfully submit that, you know, the Historical Commission's vote takes care of the issue of the roof line change. The ZBA now has to determine whether the construction is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. And I would submit that the roof decks do not constitute a substantial detriment to the neighborhood based on, you know, the really minimal impact that this addition has to the neighborhood. Also, again, reducing from two-family to one-family and no additional expansion of the footprint. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, Attorney Griffin, thank you. Pardon me. Does any, are there any other questions from the board? Hearing none?
Rob, it's Mark. I have a couple of questions.
Oh, please.
For Attorney Griffin, so you mentioned that there were some things that you agreed to in the revised plans. It was the rise, the overall roof height, one and a half feet down from three brackets off the fascia, clipboards for exposure, no brick or shiplap. Windows are six over six, I see that now. And then there were some additional things that we, we got as recommendations. And I wonder if those had ever been discussed in the meeting with you. You may have seen them with considering 12 over eight windows in the original structure, which I think is, ship might have sailed because I see the six over six installed already. No shutters on the original structure. And the vertical corner boards being only five to six inches wide. Do you, was there an agreement there in any way, shape, or form?
I'm going to let Mr. Gannick answer that question, please.
Okay.
We reduced the size of the corner boards as requested. I honestly don't remember a request to remove the shutters. And the number of lights in the window was, is a cost factor. It's dramatically more expensive to get to 12 light units, 12 over eight.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Moore, did you have any other, did you have a follow-on question as well or additional question?
I believe that's it right now.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Any other questions?
Rob, this is Bud Shagn, and I just wanted to ask the applicant, are the existing windows six over six as the house stands before it was renovations began?
They were one over one.
One over one. Okay, thank you.
This is Stephen Delisle. I have a question for either Mr. Griffin or Mr. Gannick. Is there an existing roof deck on that flat two-story addition that runs, you know, perpendicular or, excuse me, parallel to Harrison Street? Is there an existing roof deck there?
No, it is a nearly flat roof, just pitched to drain water at the moment.
Thank you.
Okay, was there anything else, Mr. Delisle, anything further?
No, thank you.
Okay, any other member of the ZBA wish to ask any questions? The applicant or Mr. Gannick or anyone else? All right.
What, actually, I do have a question.
Go ahead, Rachel.
I'm just curious, what is the, where the proposed garage is located? Is that the same footprint as the shed that's there now?
No.
What is the dimensional difference there? I mean, I know it's not within the side yard setbacks and all that. I'm just curious.
I think it's a 22 by 24.
Oh, I see now.
Garage, yeah.
Okay.
You can see the size of the footprint of the existing one. So it's slightly bigger.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, anything, anything else, Ms. Webb?
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right, moving on, anyone else wish to ask any questions? Last call for members of the board on questions to the applicant. Seeing none, we'll now move into deliberations. And as we do, let me bear with me just a second, I want to pull up the staff report. Okay, so because we are considering a special permit for nonconformities, and I believe the applicant pointed this out as well, the board must find that there will be no additional, no addition of a new nonconformity in order to grant a special permit for nonconformities. And they must find, we as a board must also find that the proposed alter addition will not create a new nonconformity. The second prong of that is that we must also, as a board, find that the application will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming use or structure. And we may consider factors such as size, scale, massing, volume as compared to other structures in the neighborhood. And that's nine, that's under 9B2 of the zoning code. So as we deliberate, we should just guide our deliberations along those lines for criteria. Anyone wish to jump in on deliberations?
I'll start, Mr. Chair. This is Stephen Delisle. I will say that I am a little bit concerned about the roof deck on the left-hand side if you're looking at the, at the, at the structure. I have a memory of other hearings where we as a board had required some sort of screening or something on roof decks that looked out onto the public way. Maybe that might be appropriate here. I think that's my greatest reservation with this project. I think that by and large, the rest of it is quite nice. Thank you.
Okay, further deliberations, and again, keep in mind the criteria for special permit if we can. Anyone wish to?
Yeah, this is Ken Swanton, if I could jump in. To like Mr. Delisle, have a concern about the roof as my primary concern. And I think one of the people in the comment mentioned, what would it be like if all the houses begin to have roof decks all the way along in our stork districts, particularly, you know, some of the finer examples of like this one? I echo Mr. Delisle's concern in that regard.
Okay, okay, thank you, Mr. Swanton. Further deliberations, I'll just kind of go through our slate of members. Mr. Cameron, anything you wish to just add in the deliberations?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I would second what the previous two members said. And for me, yeah, the roof line is not that much of an issue. The new garage structure, that seems fine. But it is particularly that roof deck to the, I guess that would be to the south, so to the left as you look at it, and also the one behind on the right. A question for the applicant, either Attorney Griffin or the architect. Were either of those roof decks in the first, you know, I'm looking at a laptop in my phone, like most of us are during this meeting. Were both roof decks there in the first iteration of this? Or were they both added, and were they both added when the revised plans came through a few days ago?
This is Barry Gannick. The roof deck over the two-story addition in this view right here was added. The other roof deck was in the first iteration.
Wasn't the first iteration, okay. So again, based on, you know, visibility to the street. I mean, it just, yeah, you just, you don't see roof decks like this on older houses like this. So that would, that would be my objection, less so the one in the back on the right.
Okay, all right, Mr. Moore, anything you wish to add?
No, I, broken record, I echo the concern. I mean, I, there's no non-new conformities created as far as size, scale, massing, and volume of the main portions of the addition, the new garage. Everything fits in with the neighborhood, in my opinion. I don't think that's out of line at all. But I, you know, I do tend to sympathize with the privacy issue and the fact that it's, you know, it's a big change from what a storehouse would, would look like. And I'm kind of curious as to how the roof deck gets by the commission. But that's a discussion for another day. So again, that's my only drawback, otherwise it makes, it seems to make sense given or assuming that there would be, you know, no objection to putting all the agreements and into any decision if it was in the affirmative.
So if, this is Rob Champetti again. So if I'm, if I'm hearing you correctly, Mark, are you, are you saying that you can support it or that you could, that you, that you can't support it as it stands with the roof deck? I just want to make sure I'm kind of hearing.
Yep, no, fair enough. Yeah, the roof deck is becoming a sticking point.
Okay. Before we continue in deliberations, let me just ask the members of the ZBA, and feel free to just chime in once I pose this question. Is there anyone on ZBA who, who feels that the roof deck is not an issue for them? Whether it is or isn't a new nonconformity, or whether it is or isn't substantially more detrimental? Is the roof deck not an issue for anyone? Okay, so hearing nothing, I'm assuming that the roof deck, and Ms. Webb, can you confirm, is the roof deck something that you're struggling with as well?
Yes.
Okay, and I believe we haven't heard from Mr. Chaney.
Yeah, I'm on the fence, I guess with the Historical Commission's approval. It's tough, but like everyone else on the board, I do struggle with the roof deck.
Okay, was there anyone who hasn't spoken during deliberations yet? I think we may have covered everything.
I think my client would like to, would like to speak.
Go ahead, Attorney Griffin.
I think my client, Michael Gray, would like to speak.
Go ahead, Mr. Gray.
Yeah, hi, thank you. I mean, I know this isn't the easiest way to hold a meeting, and I do appreciate that the town is, or the city is allowing to do meetings like this. So I do value everybody's opinion. You know, with that being said, though, you know, has anybody on the zoning board gone by to see the house and the shape that it's in right now? And I know this is something that, you know, people are going to say, well, it's not really a valid point. You're trying to steer, you know, to what is historic, and I appreciate that. You know, but there are, there is a deck on the second and third floor of this that's existing right now, which was why I kind of had this, you know, wanted to put these decks on. You know, otherwise I'm going to have a flat roof on that side of you. So what's going to be more appealing from the street or from the rail trail? A small shed roof, which looks very unthought of, or something like this?
Okay. Was there anything else, Mr. Gray?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, your sticking point is on the, the roof, and I'd really like to try to move forward so I could start construction. You know, I mean, if, yeah, I've tried to work and tried to, you know, listen to what everybody had to say and made what I thought were the right, you know, recommendations from the historic board. But apparently it's not enough, because they were allowed to come back and influence, you know, a lot of the zoning board members, it seems like. So it's just a little frustrating.
I can, I completely empathize, Mr. Gray, and certainly want to make sure you, your voice is heard as well. And was there anything else, Attorney Griffin, that you wanted to add as we kind of continue deliberation?
Well, I, I guess it does really undercut the value of going to the historical commission in the first place. You know, to, to get a roof line change and get it approved, and then bring the approved plan to the zoning board of appeals. And then because of two members of the historical commission regretting the vote, I guess, you know, now the zoning board of appeals is going to find that this one feature outweighs all of the other things that the applicant has done to improve this property. This one feature outweighs the architectural exterior aesthetics that are being improved. It outweighs the fact that a two-family is being converted to a one-family. It outweighs the fact that the property is being made more conforming in dimensional zoning. And it was really something that the applicant had every right to expect that would not be an issue in an application to the zoning board of appeals when the historical commission had already voted five to two to approve it. So I, I question whether the board really is, is making a proper decision here in focusing on this roof deck.
Well.
I certainly don't think that it meets the standard of being substantially more detrimental than what exists. There's, there's lawyers on the board, and they know how low a bar that is when it comes to Chapter 48. And so, you know, to say that one roof deck that the public can see is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, I don't believe passes legal muster.
So. I respect, I respect that. And Attorney Griffin, for, you know, kind of in all fairness, I mean, we're at the outset, and you know this process, you know, better than most. You know, it's, it's the, it's the thing, we're, we're thinking out loud, you know. And so, no, I don't believe the board's made or is, you know, imminent to make a decision one way or the other, but merely probing and prodding the, you know, the elements that are before it. So, you know, and I think in all fairness, it's, it's, we're hearing that members of the board are moved by this roof deck, and whether they would have been independent of any input from historical, you know, is something we'll never know. You know, I'll just say, just to add my thoughts as well, I mean, I, and with the greatest respect to, to Mr. Richards and Ms. Pecknick for their service and their tireless work on another city commission, you know, and not a, not unchallenging work, to say the least. We, as a fellow, you know, board, we have to rely on, on, you know, the materials that we get, and we do rely with great deal of credibility, and it really guides and creates a lens for us as we go forward in trying to, you know, run that through the prism of our own analysis. And so it is, it is disruptive, when I say that with the greatest respect, just as one voting member, not as anyone else or anything else, but it's just one voting member on the board. It manifests itself unintentionally, I'm sure, but it's just, it's disruptive to the process a little bit for us to, to get something in writing that says one thing and is the product of a vote. You know, and then have to sort of toil on the spot, you know, with for, you know, the big picture. The, the sentiments are taken with greatest, you know, credibility and respect, of course. We want to hear. We all live in the world, and so we're all inclined to change one's minds. But I think as we go through running, it's important that we get to, you know, that we rely on each other's votes and the reports that come out of those votes, so that we can then take the next steps that are needed and not, you know, kind of deal with it on the fly. And I say that just sort of as a, you know, just as a by the way. I will say that for me, you know, I am, having heard that, I mean, I too kind of share some of the the troubling aesthetic components that the roof deck sort of raises. We as a board, but, but I don't know that it rises for me as a level sufficient to move the needle. You know, when it comes to being either A, a new non-conformity, that, or B, that it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And I know many may argue that it's detrimental, and some might, may have great, you know, rationale to support it. Some of that might be aesthetic, and some of it might not be. But the reality is, you know, the standard of substantially more detrimental is a very specific legal standard. And, and so I'm not sure that that element alone, for me, moves the needle to, to kind of, you know, to kind of undermine the, the integrity of what I see or other assets and attributes. I think this applicant comes to us, having inherited this property, not literally, but figuratively, from a previous owner who converted it to two-family, and in doing so, made certain stylistic and design choices that I don't think anyone, either in attendance or panel, or, you know, or members of the board would have themselves done, you know, have done in such a historically sensitive part of the city. But be that as it may, that's how this applicant comes to us. And I think, you know, the fact that it's being rendered a single family versus a two-family is an improvement, certainly for that neighborhood. So I don't know, I mean, just as one voting member, I, I am equally troubled, you know, by the deck. But I just don't think that, I think that there are greater advantages that it sounds like are taking place in the, you know, adaptive sort of reuse of this property. And I don't think that, you know, anyone has the ability to go back in time and change some of what I think we would all agree were, were, you know, historical, you know, maybe material mistakes or other aesthetic choices that I don't think we would have, you know, supported. So I, I'm struggling as well. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but, but, you know, we, that's why we kind of do all this out loud. So I, I don't know if there's any further deliberation, or whether someone wants to make a motion, or whether the applicant wishes to take a pause and a step back. We would consider all of that.
Well, I guess, you know, if, if all the board members are, you know, set in their positions, you know, that, that would be, be good to know. Has anything changed since deliberations?
Mr. Griffin, this is Stephen Delisle. I would just say that, you know, we're not here as a board to, to just say, okay, when the historical commission says something, either way. We're, we're a board, and we, you know, we hear these things, we review the papers, and we deliberate on them. And I will tell you that this deck, for me, was a problem from the moment I saw this two weeks ago or so. And I look at Harrison Street, and I don't see a lot of other roof decks. And to me, you know, that, that may raise, rise to the level of, of substantially more detrimental when you consider that, this deck compared to the other structures and lots in the neighborhood. If there are no other decks that are visible in this way on the street, then I, I have a problem there. So I'm not, my, my mind is not swayed, and I, I still have a, a strong, a strong problem with this deck.
Mr. Chair, this is Andy Port. I just wanted to note Glenn Richards, the chair of the historical commission, has his hand raised. He might be interested in clarifying a few things. I know there was some reference to the NHC meeting and discussion previously.
Of course.
Thank, thank you for allowing that. Can you still hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things in the characterizations from Attorney Griffin. I'm not suffering any regret from, from my decision, and he's quite correct. I did vote in favor. The, my thought process was actually very similar to what you just described, Chairman, about, you know, the, the overall balance of things. The applicant had made a number of changes and so on, but I would definitely disagree with the statement that, that they were, didn't, that it was unexpected that they would be opposition to roof decks, first of all. Because at the first time they appeared, they, the roof decks were raised as a concern. And in the second time, they were before our board, there was, there was one member, I recall distinctly, said, oh, I don't have a problem with roof decks, but virtually every other member did. So, you know, it was definitely raised as an, as an issue. Now, but, but again, as I said, you know, we were kind of looking at this unbalance, and it was further complicated by the fact that Attorney Griffin raised an issue of what, how much jurisdiction or, or purview, whatever you want to put it, we have over, that this overall design, other than strictly speaking, the roof line. And he was, and he made a legal argument about that. And, you know, it was the middle of a public hearing in a Zoom meeting, and I, as chair, decided that this was not the appropriate place to try to litigate that particular argument. So, you know, kind of, kind of fell back to, all right, look, on balance, you know, he's doing a lot of the right things. We do have some reservations, which I put into my report. And so that's why I voted yes to, to let it go forward. But I, in no way, which I, again, still don't regret, but, you know, what I, for me, the ideal thing is to, yeah, have the project go forward, but, you know, without, especially, you know, without the deck on the, the south side that we've been talking about, you know, maybe the one on the other side isn't quite, certainly not visible from, from Harris, Harrison Street, it's, be, just be visible from the rail trail. But anyway, that's, I just wanted to clarify those couple of points. Thank you.
I appreciate that. This is Rob Champetti. Thank you, Chairman Richards. And, and I, you know, I mean, as, as just a dovetail on, on my kind of, my comments on deliberations as well. I mean, I, I, I'm more, I guess I'm, I'm more sort of lenient-minded when it comes to a roof deck that doesn't, that doesn't face the, you know, Harrison Street as much. You know, if, if we were discussing one roof deck over another, you know, I, I don't disagree with that, with, with the sentiment of some of my colleagues with respect to roof decks on, you know, on the main street. I just don't think in principle that a roof deck alone, just as a hypothetical element by itself, rises to that substantially more detrimental standard. But, you know, we take these in case-by-case matters, so that's why we have these deliberations, and that's why we have, you know, meetings such as this, but.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Yes, please.
This is Mark Griffin again. The roof deck that faces Harrison Street, the applicant would be willing to remove that. Would that satisfy the board?
Okay, so bear with me just a, for a moment, Mr. Attorney Griffin. So members of the board, the applicants, you've heard, looking to propose a, an alteration to their plan as a way to kind of soften the, the impact and the, the comments of the board. What does, what does the board wish to do?
Hi, this is member Cameron. That would, I would vote in favor of the application.
So. Mr. Cameron, so with that modification that sways your vote, one, you said that, that actually moves you to a more affirmative position?
Correct, correct.
Anyone else wish to speak on whether that might or might not change anything?
This is Mr. Moore, and I can certainly support it without that deck. You know, that's assuming there's no major changes to, other changes to that roof line. You know what I'm saying? Just to say that, get rid of the deck without knowing what was going to happen in place of that would be an issue.
We'd keep the same design, but no more deck.
No more deck on Harrison Street?
No more deck on Harrison Street. That's, that's the only one I'm concerned. Yeah.
Right.
All right, that'd be amenable.
Yes, I agree.
This is Mr. Delisle. I would, I would concur also.
Okay, Mr. Chaney?
I, I was probably going to be okay with the, the deck, so with it missing, I'm in the affirmative as well.
Okay, so it seems as though that, that modification is met with some negative by, by a member's sentiment on, on a bit of an improvement. I, I agree with that as well. Does anyone else wish to speak as part of deliberations before we move to a, a motion on, on the application?
Chair, this is just Andy Port, Director of Planning and Development. I'm not sure it's a particular concern in this particular application. I know sometimes when a plan is modified on the floor and might be acted upon that night, we sometimes ask for updated drawings. I'm not necessarily convinced that's necessary in this scenario, given that it's just the removal of the, the railing, you know, component there. Obviously, that would be a roof as opposed to a deck. But I just wanted to point out that sometimes that's necessary. I don't, I'm not convinced in this scenario, but it's for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Port. Anyone on the board wish to speak before we take up the, the matter for a motion? Seeing no further hands. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the application? And I would suggest that anyone making the motion should include that it would be subject to the applicant's submission of a revised plan for the planning office's records. Was somebody speaking? Somebody?
Sorry, Rachel, was that you?
No.
Someone might be speaking in the background, Andy. Okay, do we have a motion? And again, framing, under Robert's rules, frame the motion in the affirmative. So a motion to approve is what would be needed in a second.
This is, this is, I'm Cameron. I'll make the motion. So this would be a motion to approve the special permit for non-conformities for 12 Harrison Street. Application 2020-037 with revised plans to be submitted to the planning office reflecting the change to the roof deck.
This is Andy Port, Director of Planning. If I could just suggest, and if it might be a friendly amendment to that, that it be submitted prior to the issuance of a building permit?
Thank you.
That, that's fine. So that would be a friendly amendment to that motion that every, the condition that Mr. Cameron had proposed is now added, added to that will be that it has to be submitted before issuance of the building permit. Okay, motion is made.
Seconded, Mark Moore.
Okay, motion's made by Mr. Cameron and seconded by Mr. Moore, calling the roll and respond by yea or nay. Mr. Cameron?
Yea.
Mr. Moore?
Yea.
Delisle?
Yea.
Was that a nay or a yea?
Oh, I'm sorry, yea, as in, in the affirmative.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. You cut out for a second. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Chaney?
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. So that is, sorry, six in the affirmative. The motion carries, and the application with the, with the amendment is approved for a special permit for non-conformities on 12 Harrison Street. Thank you all very much, and thank you for your comments, Mr. Richards and Ms. Pecknick. I know you already serve on one board. Thank you for chiming in on ours to offer your insights.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next matter, before, the next matter on the agenda is the application for 37 Reservation Terrace, the application by Kim and Mark McKee, McKick, McKick, care of Lisa Mead, attorney, Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa LLC. The matter is 033 of 2020, a special permit for non-conformities to construct a 210 square foot first and second floor addition to a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family residence. May we hear from the applicant, Attorney Mead?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Port, maybe you could bring up the presentation? And while he's doing it, Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa, 30 Green Street, new report. And with me this evening are, in fact, our clients, Kim and Mark McKicka, and Eileen Graff, who is the architect on the project.
All right, apologize, just a moment. I'm just making sure we have that available in one second.
Thank you. So the property is at 37 Reservation Terrace on Plum Island. It's a typical Plum Island lot, just a little bit smaller than some of them, 4,285 square feet. And the applicant is proposing to remove a little bit of the, of the property, of the structure, and kind of fill in some voids in the existing structure. There's no increase in the footprint, but there is a deck that will be built over. So it does appear to increase the lot coverage. The house is currently pre-existing non-conforming for a number of reasons. The FAR and open space are being intensified. And as a result, Section 21G4B requires a special permit from the zoning board where there are alteration to reconstruction or change, where there is a floor area ratio or lot coverage non-conformity, and we're increasing those non-conformities. So the proposal- So the proposal is to construct a first and second floor addition to the single family residence for a total added living space of 210 square feet. And when I say addition, again, it's more of filling in the voids, which Eileen will review in a little bit. The applicant is increasing the lot coverage by 1.6% and the FAR by 0.049%. Andy, could you go to the next slide, please? So the lot is in the FEMA flood zone, AE9, and is preexisting nonconforming for lot area and FAR. So the FAR is currently 470, and it's going to go to 519. So that's 0.470 to 0.519. The minimum lot area for the piot, of course, is 12,000 square feet. Thank you. And the maximum allowable lot coverage is 20%, and the existing is 22.5. And it's good to go to 24.1, but that's because that deck that you can see on the right-hand side of the plan there, that's existing, that's going to be converted to living space. So the deck that doesn't have a current roof over it doesn't count against lot coverage. And once you put a roof over it and enclose it, it does count against lot coverage. So the applicant, the minimum required side yard setback is 20 feet. The front yard setback is at 19.2. The northern side setback is at 4.4. And there is no rear setback, because if you look at this plan, you can see that the house actually goes on to the next lot and has historically since before the 60s. And there is an easement that the neighbor has given them in order to accommodate for that incursion into the lot next door. That's not going to be, that will not be exacerbated. So we have received historic commission approval, which is noted in the staff notes for the demolition of a roof line, which Eileen will talk to you about as she goes through the plans. And so what I thought we would do, the original structure was a cottage, which was built in 1920. Sometime after 1969, it was a partial second story constructed kind of over the original cottage roof. And Eileen will go through that now, if you don't mind, Eileen.
No problem. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Eileen Graff. So this is a perfect drawing to start with. If you look at the top right drawing, that's sort of depicts that building over a building that Lisa was just touching on. So right above the three identical windows on that first floor level, you could see a roof line that was the original cottage at one point. And then when they did the addition for the second story, you could see they simply plopped it right on top. So it's definitely a very curious evolution of a cottage into expanded upon expanded footprint and building. So our goals with this project were to maintain the existing three bedrooms and move the living space to the second floor, at the same time aesthetically sort of unifying this exterior, this sort of hodgepodge of different roof lines, et cetera, so that it can, the exterior elevations could be more attractive and more balanced to the eye. So maybe we could, if you don't mind, Andy, could we switch to an existing floor plan so that I could point out where these changes will happen? Perfect. Okay, so if we go actually to the existing second floor plan, the far right drawing, that's actually, this, it's a second floor plan. And on the right bottom corner, you can read deck. So that area, right in that bottom right corner of the second floor, is an area that will be filled in to become additional second floor living space. So that's the, one of the voids that we're talking about that will be filled in. Then if you switch to this middle drawing, the first floor plan, you'll see the front entry door, and then in front of that is a first floor deck. To the right of that is an existing sunroom. Well, we're proposing to rebuild that sunroom, which needs more substantial structural support than currently has. And we're going to just stretch the length of the sunroom towards the front door. So adding some square footage on the first floor level and by stretching that existing sunroom to be larger in footprint. There will be a new shifted location of stairs to that front door, but essentially the new added space sits on top of that existing deck, again, filling in that corner and that void space. On the back of that same middle drawing, you'll see the first floor deck. That deck there will be built slightly different footprint, but slightly reducing what it currently covers. And then if we could switch now to the proposed exterior elevations? Great. So if we start with the top left drawing, that's the front elevation. So this existing sunroom that was on the right side of that first floor, you can see expands and becomes wider. And that is the space that was the existing deck in front of the front door that becomes incorporated to the first floor living space. And then above that, you can see it's become a flat roof so that it can then be roof deck space from access from the second floor. The two slider openings that you see, the right one is the corner on the second floor that got filled in. So that's all one plane now. And that rectangle, if you will, of the second floor, now it becomes clean and pure in its shape. And then the drawing to the right of that, the top right, you could see this infill from the side. On the lower level, on the first level, you see those two windows. That's that sunroom from the side. Again, same, same front plane. That doesn't get any closer to Reservation Terrace and then the roof deck above it. And then the triple window on the second floor is that new filled in space from the second, second level. On the bottom left drawing, you can see the back deck rebuilt. It now has, it is now on the first level covered porch. And then on the second floor becomes a small second floor deck to the rear. But again, slightly smaller than the original footprint. All in all, the, you know, the materials are, you know, are clambered. They're sort of coastal in their, in their feel. We've got cottage-style windows with a six over one. Again, trying to, to, to bring this building back to a more aesthetically pleasing, attractive seaside, seaside home. So I think that we have improved that. We like to think that this is a huge improvement for the neighborhood from its eclectic additions that it had over the years and really simplifying the lines. The additions, to touch on that again, that second floor fill-in in the corner and that first floor infill add up to 210 square feet of added space. So really a minor addition of increase in square footage. And I believe that's all, but I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the architectural changes.
Thank you. Maybe Andy could go down to Slide 7, which is the assessor's map. So the, the board needs to review this under the special permit for nonconformities under the Plum Island Overlay District, which is under 21G. And the first criteria there is the proposed change will not be substantially more detrimental to the existing nonconforming structure to the neighborhood or the piot. And the second criteria is the change will not cause the structure to be within 10 feet of the side lot line, more than two stories or 35 feet in height. So we can deal with the second one first. None of those criteria are triggered by this. We're not doing, we're not encouraging, incurring on any of the sidelines that are currently not already there. And it's not going up more than two stories. It's already, it's only going up to the height that it is, which is 264, I believe. It's not more than 35 feet. So the other criteria is whether or not it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or to the piot. So there's not going to be any change in occupancy in this proposal. The addition is 210 square feet. And as I noted earlier, and as Eileen noted, the only footprint change is the filling in of some of that deck area that doesn't, isn't already covered. This plan shows you a couple things. I'm going to show you some photographs shortly. So the green is the plan in front of you for 37 Reservation Terrace. And so, Andy, if you could go to the next slide. So this is the current 37 Reservation Terrace. This is actually some good photographs, because you can see where the infill is going to be in the new sunroom, in the new sunroom, so on the front. And Eileen, you should correct me if I'm wrong, but the photograph to the left, you'll see that that, the sun porch, sunroom gets extended over to the left, over covering that door on the first floor. And then in the middle photograph, you'll see the void on the second floor that gets filled in, because you can see the old cottage roof on that actually, where the second floor was kind of plopped out. So that's what the structure currently looks like, and the height's not going to change. The width is not going to change. So if you could go to the next slide, Andy? So the stars on the prior slide, 39 Reservation Terrace is the one right next door. You can see that in the, in the first slide to the left. The center is 1563rd Street. It's a, it's the other a butter behind. And 2063rd Street, you can see down the street there a little bit at the size of that structure. And then if you could go to the next slide, Andy? So there's 39 Reservation Terrace also next door and 2063rd Street, which is, 2063rd Street is two, is one street over behind them. So they're 63rd and Reservation Terrace, as you can look on the mind maps in a second, come into contact, and the houses both on 63rd. To the rear, you can see that. And then, so 63rd is the second star back there. And if you could go back to the photograph, thank you. And then 1163rd Street. So you can see that the, that the proposed renovations to this structure actually certainly do not, as compared to the bulk and size and height of the other structures in the nearby area, are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And certainly, the renovations to this house as being proposed at 210 square feet, no additional height, and the lot coverage is only increased because of the cover over the deck essentially, is certainly not more detrimental to the piot than the existing structure. I would also note that the applicant provided letters of support from two immediately adjacent neighbors, that being both the, the house on 65th Street that abuts to the rear. And Andy, if you go back to the mind maps, I'll show folks where these are. So the house that is on 65th Street, that is the adjacent property, so it's Lot 76, Map 76-237, we have a letter of support. And then a letter of support from the, from the adjacent abutter at 1563rd Street, which is on the corner lot where that blue star is on the corner of 63rd Street and Reservation Terrace. The other corner at 65th and Reservation Terrace owned by Mr. Solomon, he, that house is for sale, and the abutters have dropped off letters and plans, but he's not been around, and I believe he lives out of state. So they did contact them. And then there are some other letters of support from some other folks in the general area on Plum Island. So we believe that the modest addition and renovations to the structure are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or to the piot. And we did not trigger any of the first criteria. And we will request the board grant a special permit for nonconformities. Thank you.
Okay, is Attorney Mead, was that about it for the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Great. All right, moving on. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in support of the application? And again, if you wish to speak, just raise your hand, give your first and last name and address. Seeing no hands in support, anyone wish to speak in opposition? Seeing no hands in opposition, we'll close that portion of the hearing and move to questions from the board. Any members of the ZBA have any questions for Attorney Mead, Ms. Graff, or anyone else?
No, this is Mr. Moore. I have one question, and I think it's very visible in the plans, but there will be an additional full bathroom, right, added to this?
That is correct, yes.
This is Mr. Cameron, question about what is needed from the Conservation Commission. My understanding is if this is approved by the ZBA, they still need to go to the CONCOM?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Cameron. Yes, it still does need an order of conditions and not like, unlike any, you know, most other applications on Plum Island and older ones. So we had historic commission review, ZBA and CONCOM review. It's interesting, under the Wetlands Protection Act, it actually requires, if the, you know, if the commission were to enforce it, that the applicant could go and apply to other boards and commissions first before they come to the commission. In this instance, it's just how it all fell, given everything that's been happening with COVID and that organizational thing. So it will be going to the Conservation Commission for sure.
Okay, any further questions? All right, moving to deliberations. And again, we're deliberating the, the application, which is a special permit for nonconformity. So our deliberation should be framed around the standard, which is that for the board to find this application in the affirmative, it has to determine that it will not be more stand, that the proposal will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the preexisting nonconforming use for structure or the piot. And again, when making that, we factor in things such as size, scale, massing, volume as compared to other structures in this part of the Plum Island Overlay District and in this part of the Plum Island neighborhood that the application sits in. So deliberations, who wants to kick things off?
This is Mr. Cameron. Can I go first?
Please.
Rather than all sitting around looking at our screens, waiting for somebody. So I'll say, generally, I'm in favor of this. I would be interested to hear other deliberatory, that's a word, comment from fellow board members. I am very sensitive to the original intent of the Plum Island Overlay District. Before I really read through this and heard the presentation tonight, I was anticipating that, that, that I would be negatively inclined towards this. But essentially, it's a very small addition of square footage. I think the current square footage, if you include the basement, which I'm not really sure you should, I don't know. But it, you know, it's about maybe 1,500 square feet or 1,600 or so if you do not include the basement. And adding 210 square feet doesn't, doesn't seem like it's getting that much bigger. And it's, it's still keeping the three bedrooms and one bath. So I think that's true on the bath as well. But, so, you know, it's not like you're going to be jamming more people in here or a bigger family moving in there or more, more people staying there in the summer. It's a rental, so I, you know, I, I think I can support it.
Okay, anyone else wish to speak in deliberations?
This is Mark Moore. I'll, I'll jump off second, I guess. And I would agree with Mr. design and the fit to the neighborhood. I mean, there's no new, no new nonconformity. Just, I think, really doing a nice job at improving the use of the space and the look of the building. So I don't see the building itself, especially when you look at, or consider mass and size of adjacent dwellings in the area a problem at all. So I see it passing that hurdle. So more detrimental to the neighborhood, no. I have a little sticking point on the piot, and it was kind of not even thinly veiled. The question was going to be on the extra bathroom. Just to me, when you tick off all the, I guess, the intent of the piot is to reduce damages to private property from floods and ensure public safety during, and personal injury during issues, eliminate costs to, for response and cleanup after floods and issues, avoid loss of utility service, you know, none of these made, applied to this house. But there was, there's one that says, limit the expansion so as to prevent exacerbation of existing problems with intensity or intensity abuse. And when I see another bathroom go in, that got me thinking. And it's something that I just want to kind of flesh out a little bit, because- with respect to the pieod, there is a fragile water and sewer infrastructure on the island. And, and adding a second bathroom, I think puts a a chance, you know, I guess for doubling of water use and, and a more intense use maybe through rentals than would normally be done with one bathroom. So that's something that I wanted to hear from, from others in deliberation. But right now, you know, overall, I think I'm in favor of it, but I do have a little sticking point with this and need to, need to talk through a little bit more.
Mr. Chair, could I address that if you wouldn't mind? Because I think I
By all means, go ahead, please.
Mr. Moore, I think you raised a really good point and it's a really important distinction of how one measures intensity on the utilities on Plum Island. So the intensity on utilities is actually measured under the Title V standard, which is the number of bedrooms. So you can actually have five bathrooms in a house in one bedroom. And you would only be, the intensity would be 110 gallons per day. So the reason that the pieod capped the number of bedrooms at three or one more than you currently have, so long as it's no more than three, is because they did not want to have a system that allowed for more development than current Title V standards would allow. And so it's important to note that the bedroom count did not change. And how you determine what a bedroom is generally is very clear and that has not changed at all in this development. So it's actually the intensity of use on the utility is based upon the number of bedrooms and not the number of bathrooms under the Title V standard. So I just think that's an important distinction to make because that, of course, is one of the basics, as you noted, under the pieod. And, and, and it's so important that that limitation is wrapped into the zoning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Mead. Anyone else in deliberation wish to speak?
Go ahead, Stephen.
No, no, you go ahead.
Hi, this is Ken Swanton. I, I guess my concern is for the pieod. Last Plum Island, when we looked at two weeks ago or started a month ago, the FAR was only, I think, point one five and it was going up to point two five, right at the limit. This one's starting out at point four seven, which is like double the density. It's a very small lot. And I, I just, I, I think the planning department's right to raise the concern about the density and the pieod in general. And I, you know, to take this, I know it's just a small infill in addition, but to, but to, but to have, have it become even more dense when it's already almost twice as dense as, as, as the regulations now provide, I guess that's, that's, that would be a concern for me.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, I think that I would go back to the standard of substantially more detrimental. In this instance, the intensity seems to jump so much because you're right, Mistress Wanton. They, the lot is a smaller lot than the, the one that you deliberated over two weeks ago. And that was, you know, much small, not much smaller, but had a much less FAR. This FAR historically had, is nonconforming. That's what it is. One of the reasons we need to be here is because we're increasing that nonconformity. But the intensity of use in this instance is not to, is not to add a bedroom, for example, but to add 210 square feet boat on the first floor, a little bit of an entry and then that infill on the second floor. So I think that when you look at this, the question is, is it substantially more detrimental? And it, this is certainly not 210 square feet or the increase in the FAR is point zero four nine. And so while it's true, given the size of the lot, it appears to be a jump. The reality is it was already over. And this addition is not substantially more detrimental than that, which already existed, would be the applicant's position.
If, if I could just respond for a moment, I mean, I understand your point. I, I just think it's a very fragile environment there. And if, and I know in the past, the zoning board of appeals has allowed houses that are too dense to begin with to become even more dense. I'm just questioning whether that makes, you know, if that's good policy going forward and whether we should continue to do that. Just my opinion. I'm not trying to argue it here in deliberations.
Yeah. And I, and I don't mean, I mean, and I, and I think that, I think you also raised a good point and I'm certainly not arguing it, you know, putting the case forward. The zoning board isn't, they're not policymakers, right? That's the, that's the city council's job. And the city council has said, here's the standard for deciding whether or not you can increase or not increase something that's already nonconforming. And the, one of the standards is substantially more detrimental. So the question is, how is it applied within the confines of the standards that have been adopted?
Okay, let's, let's move along in that dialogue and thank you, Attorney Mead, for the follow up as well. I see that, Mr. Moore, you, I'm sorry, Mr. Cameron, you have your hand up.
I'm all set. That was from earlier and I will take it down.
Okay, no worries. So we've heard from Mr. Cameron, Mr. Moore and Mr. Delisle. Ms. Webb, do you have any, any comments, deliberations that you want to share?
Just, just a few. I, I do not find this proposal to be any more detrimental to the neighborhood. I think it's a very minor proposal that they're, that they're showing here. And especially as compared to the other, the neighboring parcels by photograph that Attorney Mead shared with us. This seems to be, you know, not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So I am in support of it.
Okay, and Mr. Channing?
Yeah, I'm also in support of it. I agree with Ms. Webb. I don't feel that it's substantially more detrimental. I, I like the changes being made and the fact that it's staying three bedrooms. You know, I'm very comfortable with it. So I can support this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Channing. Anyone else wish to, to speak in deliberations?
Mr. Chair, this is Mr. Delisle. I think you, you missed, you mistook me for Mr. Swanton earlier. Yeah, no, no, that's okay. I, so I would just chime in and say that I, I'm inclined to agree with Ms. Webb on this one. I think that, you know, this one, I don't see this as being a substantial detriment to, to the neighborhood. So I can support this application.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle. And, and just to, just to back clean up, I, I concur as well. I feel that this is a very minor and reasonable request of, you know, a very minor square footage infill without any substantial, certainly not substantially more detrimental, you know, change and impact on the, the neighborhood or the pieod. So I can support it as well. Do we have a motion from a member of the board?
This is Mr. Cameron. I will make a motion to approve the special permit for nonconformities to 37 Reservation Terrace, 2020 dash zero three three. Mr. Moore, seconds.
Mr. Cameron made the motion, Mr. It's seconded by Mr. Moore calling the roll. Mr. Cameron?
Yeah.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Channing?
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes as well. That is six in the affirmative. The eyes have it, the motion carries and the application is approved. Good luck and thank you, everyone, for, for your presentation and for your patience. All right.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Moving on to the next application, it is the matter of 35 Oakland Street J&amp;M Contractors LLC, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Talerman and Costa LLC. This matter is docket zero three five of 2020, a special permit for nonconformities to construct in addition to a preexisting nonconforming two-family. May we hear from the applicant, Attorney Mead?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Lisa Mead, Mead Talman, Costa, 30 Green Street. And your report on behalf of Joel Willett, J&amp;M Construction, who is now the owner of the property. It's been a long time since we've been able to get in front of the board on this. There was an advertising problem in the COVID thing and so we're happy to be here. And now he owns it. He's not just the purchaser. Also with us is David Carey, who is the architect. And I'm going to wait while Andy pulls up the plans. And, Mr. Chair, just as a matter of process, and I certainly don't want to tell you your business, but I believe the board has five voting members. Is that correct and not six?
That's correct. The voting members are Mr. Cameron, Mr. Moore, Mr. Delisle, Ms. Webb and myself. And then we have two alternates, Mr. Channon and Mr. Swanton. And we had originally enlisted Mr. Channon to be a voting member, but that was before Ms. Webb had logged on.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you very much.
At the outset, I had made that announcement and then Rachel had jumped in. So that meant that Bud lost his vote.
All right, Bud. So thank you. I, it's without pictures, it's hard to see who's doing what. So this is 35 Oakland Street. This is the R2 zoning district. Andy, you, you actually have a presentation that we provided to you? Just like the last one? Thank you. The property is 6,989 square feet, has 59 feet of frontage. The R2 requires 15,000 square feet and 120 feet of frontage for a two-family. So it's currently a preexisting nonconforming two-family use already. The proposal is to construct a two and a half story addition to the rear of the existing residence, connected by a common wall connector under the ordinance. And so we need a special permit for nonconformities to do that. I might add, Andy, if you could move to the next slide. Thank you. There's an old shed that is on this property. You can see it at the, in the bottom kind of middle of the lot. That will be removed. We went to the historic commission, amazingly enough. That shed was looked like it was over 100 years old. And so the historic commission did give us permission to demolish and remove that shed. So the R2 district requires a minimum front setback of 25 feet and we have 20 for the two-family use. Excuse me, the, for two-family use. And the, the structure actually, front yard setback with structure is actually 4.4, not 20, I apologize. So that's nonconforming. The side yard setbacks are 19.3 on the right side or the top of the screen here, and 8.7 on the lower side. The addition on the back will actually improve as it goes back. The side yard setback on the lower part of the screen, as you can see. The height and lot coverage, rear yard setback, open space and parking are all in compliance with the ordinance and will not come out of compliance with this proposal. So the applicant proposes to construct that two, two and a half story addition to the rear of the project and continue to have it used as a two-family. So what we, I thought I would do now is turn it over to David and David can talk to you a little about, a little bit about his proposed architecture and the proposed addition as it goes back in the yard.
Thank you. And thanks to the board for hearing us under these circumstances. And what we wanted to do in, in adding the, the the addition off, off the rear of the property was to keep in scale with what exists. And to clean up the, the back portion, which currently with the two-family use has a pressure-treated deck and stairway and a few additions and a little bit of a hodgepodge of windows toward, on, on that rear elevation. You're currently looking at the front in the top left existing, which we will keep as is. We, this, this is the part we like about it. And certainly the side as well. It's really a, a, a nice example of kind of, I guess I'd call it Greek revival or inspired of that era. Perhaps later in that. There's, there's a shed dormer up top as well existing, which is fairly low profile and I'm not sure the date of that addition. The, if we could go to the rear, the next slide, please, to just show quickly the, the rear of the existing. That's where the deck comes off of the second unit, which is the second and third floor. There's a one, one unit is on the first floor, the other's on the second and third. That will be removed. There's a small shed structure which accesses the basement. That will also be removed, the deck, the lower deck will be removed. And from the other side, you can see a one-story shed structure which remains. The windows toward the rear will change. And now if you move on to the fifth slide, please. On the front, you can see what we're adding to the left side is a dormer that's also in keeping in with the scale setback just under seven feet from each gable end is where the, the new dormers will occur. And up the roof, a couple of feet, 18 inches on one side and a couple of feet on the other side. The addition off the back, what we decided, it's kind of one of those things where two-connected becomes a mass which is too large and a, a, a slight disconnect allows light. And so it's kind of in, in keeping with the, the idea of, of a carriage house, for, for lack of a better word, connected with a two-story connection. So it's a two and a half story main structure, connector and, and a two and a half story second structure. If you go then to the next slide, this top right is the rear facing elevation of the second, of the addition facing out onto the backyard. And the lower one faces down toward the Merrimack River on the lower left. So again, keeping the, keeping the shed structure, adding a two-story connection and then creating that, that carriage house structure on the back. This is a perspective view we've taken from looking at it at the main house with the, there's a, you can see the one slate, one story addition to the back of the main structure. And then the carriage house behind that.
Thank you, David. So the, this is also in the DCOD. However, we're taking off less than 25% of the exterior walls and therefore it doesn't trigger the DCOD. So the only other review was the historic commission to remove that shed that you can see in the back of the lot there and the yellow outlined lot. So we're here for a modification to a preexisting nonconforming structure under 9B2 of the ordinance. And the board needs to find that there is no addition of a new nonconformity and there isn't. I would reiterate that the, the structure is actually more narrow than the existing structure from the front, from the front. It actually steps in that side setback that's 8.7 to make it 11. And the other side is just about lined up, maybe a little bit inside the front wall on the property. And so the next thing is there's no new nonconformities. The next thing is that the proposed change will not be substantially more detrimental, detrimental to the neighborhood than the preexisting nonconforming structure. I think what's, what's important, Andy, if you could just back up one minute to the mind maps for a second. You got ahead of me. So here's the neighborhood. There's a number of two families and single families. Mostly they're all in the same size lots on average, whether it's a two or a single. But this is not unfamiliar for Oakland Street. And some of the lots, as you can see from these footprints, have bigger, deeper properties or structures on them and some don't. So what we did was kind of did an analysis of what's around there. And so, Andy, you can now go to the next slide. And you'll actually see, so we divided up the single families lot sizes and the two-family lot sizes. And you can see the two-family lot sizes are an average of 7,300 square feet. So we're just about under that at 6,900, but pretty close to be right on the middle of the average for the to be right on the middle of the average for the two-family structures that exist on Oakland Street in this neighborhood. So if you go to the next slide, Andy. So then we did a comparison of the, we did a comparison of lot coverages. So even though we're not exceeding lot coverage, nor are we currently non-conforming for a lot coverage, we said, okay, what happens to the lot coverage when we look at this proposal? And so the lot coverage, again, is right at the average. So the current average is actually 21.9. Our proposal's 23. But you can see, you know, there's a 28, a 34, a 28. And then, of course, there are some smaller ones for the, for 13. That's a more intense use, 13, 16, and 17. So we're not far off from that, and certainly not substantially different than any of the other houses in the neighborhood. So then I thought we'd show you some photographs of the nearby houses in the neighborhoods. Can you give me the next one, Andy? So this is actually this structure. And as you can see, it's a narrow house. And so I thought what was interesting is, as you go back behind this, the addition is no wider, and in fact, it's a little bit more narrow than the front addition. And so this is the house on the street right now. You can see it's got a significantly sized backyard. And if you go one more slide, Andy. I'm going to show you some other pictures in the neighborhood of some other two-families that exist right around this location. So the one on the left is down the street towards Merrimack. The one in the middle and the one on the right are on the opposite side of Oakland Street, moving up towards High Street. So we think that based on what we've shown to you, our proposal is certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming homes, either two-family or single-family. I would also say, to make sure that you received, we received three letters of support. And if you go back to the mind maps, Andy, I can tell you where those were from. The three letters of support are from the adjacent property at 30, hang on a second, at 37. So 37 Oakland Street provided a letter of support. 26A and 26B Ting Street, which are in the backyard, provided letters of support. And 33 Oakland Street actually is owned by somebody who doesn't live there, it's rented out. And we provided the letter that was left in the mailbox, hoping to elicit some conversation, but that was never returned. So we believe that based upon the standards set forth in the ordinance, that we certainly know new non-conformity is created, and that the proposed change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. Thank you.
Okay, Attorney Mead, thank you. And was there any further part of the presentation before we?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, great. Moving then on to the next segment. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak in support of the application? And again, just give your name and address, if you, and raise your hand using the little hand icon. Seeing, I don't believe, we've got one. Do you have one? Yep. Carol? Carol, you'll need to unmute yourself as well if you'd like to speak.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, hi, this is Carol Norton, 37, and we continue to support this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Norton. Anyone else wish to speak in support of the application? Anyone else wish to speak in support? Seeing no new hands, moving to the next segment, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Or wishing to speak neither for or against, but just have comments? Feel free to just raise your hand and feel free to speak your mind. Seeing no new hands in opposition, we'll close that segment of the public hearing and move on to questions from the board. Any member of the ZBA with any questions for Attorney Mead? Any questions for the applicant or anything that we've heard so far?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Rachel.
For Attorney Mead, I'm just, for point of clarification, you said that the existing building is a single unit on the first floor, and then it's a second unit on the second and third floors. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what Mr. Carey said, yes.
Oh, sorry, okay. And then, so what is going to be the new configuration? Is it going to be that the existing building is a single unit, and then the new part is a second unit?
I'm going to let David answer that. I believe that's the correct answer. David, are you still on?
Now, I'm no longer muted. Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And the connector actually that you see there, that's actually the half, half of that connector is part of the front unit and half of that connector. So the demising wall will basically be between those two little windows.
Okay, and what is, what is the use on the first floor of the addition that is not showing his windows?
The sliding barn door type of?
Yes, what is that?
That's wall. That's actually a wall there. We just kind of dressed it up a little bit. Behind it is a living room. It's a, that's a living room in the front, dining room to where the windows are, living, dining. Beyond the dining, you know, going back in the other, straight back toward the river, is a kitchen. So the front, that unit is basically kitchen, dining, living, with a lav. The door to the left there is a mudroom entry.
It looks very interesting architecturally.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Seeing no hands from the, from.
Chair, this is Mr. Delisle. What's the, currently, is this, is this building or this, is this apartments? Or is this condos? Or what is this?
Well, it's not, Mr. Delisle, it's a two-family right now. It's, Mr. Willett bought it to renovate it, so I believe it was rented out.
And when, once renovated, it will be sold as condos or will be rented out?
Nope, it will be sold as condominiums.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Care, a couple more. Yeah, thank you. What's the footprint of the addition?
I was just, David, you may have that off the top of your head. I don't have it on mine.
The first floor of the unit one is 912 square feet. The addition is 752 square feet. Little, little less than the main house. The main house gained a little bit of space with, if you're looking at this site plan, where you see 35 Oakland Street. The small L shape, the backwards L shape where the entry is in the, that connects the two, is part of 35 Oakland on that first floor. So again, it's kind of subdivided, it's divided, that little connector is basically divided in half where that wall formerly deck, where it says deck, the wall that goes right through the word deck is part of, the left side is part of the rear unit, and the right side is part of the front unit.
So the first floor of the existing structure is 912 square feet?
Actually, it's, the first floor existing is 807, and the addition on the first floor to that will be 105 as part of that, that first unit. So the resulting first floor footprint in the front is 912. The rear.
Okay, can I break in for a sec? So you've got 807 square feet is the existing footprint of the, of the current structure. Then that first unit will have 105 square feet of new space.
Correct.
Less than 752 square feet of new construction in the back.
Correct.
For a grand total of 857 new square feet on the ground floor. So the new, so basically the long way around the barn, saying that the addition's bigger than the house.
That, the square foot, yes, yes. The square foot of the first floor, yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Footprint-wise. Because there's that connector.
Where will the parking be for each of these units? Is the paved areas on both sides of the house to remain?
Yes. Do you see the, you can see the driveways on both sides? That serves both of them current, that serves both two units currently, so that won't change.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, closing that part of the hearing, we're going to move to deliberations. And again, we're deliberating around the standard of a special permit for non-conformity. So the board needs to make a finding that there will be no addition of a new non-conformity in order to grant the special permit for non-conformities. And also prone to that the board must find the application will not substantiate, be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conforming use or structure. In use of that, the board may consider factors such as size, scale, mass, and volume as compared to the others. All of this is subject to Section 9B2. I also note that the, the application appears to trigger the street and sidewalk ordinance. And we, we haven't heard back from DPS on recommendations. Is that, is that right, Andy and Caitlin? Do we have anything from DPS?
That's right. I haven't heard back yet. I know that Attorney Mead was also checking in with DPS. I'm not sure if she's heard back yet.
No, I, thank you, Caitlin. No, I asked Jamie to go out and take a look about a week or so ago. I know that he's, he's pretty much out straight. So the applicant would be fine with the condition, as the board has done in the past, that we would comply with the street and sidewalk determination as made by the DPS.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Mead. All right, so let's jump into deliberations. We'll just start at the top of the batting order. Mr. Cameron, why don't you kick things off if you could?
I was actually going to be quiet this time. Yeah, I, you know, it's kind of the tail that's going to wag the dog. It's a, it's a big addition, for sure. You know, aesthetically, you know, I think it's certainly in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood. I used to live over there, so I'm familiar with a number of properties that before my time had, you know, significant additions on them. So generally, generally, I'd be in favor of the application.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cameron. Mr. Moore?
I would agree with most of what Mr. Cameron said. It's definitely, in my mind, it doesn't create any new non-conformities, and I don't see it being substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, especially when you compare to the lots. And that was kind of done for us by, to some extent by the applicant and Attorney Mead, that on that street it is not unusual to have setups like this. So although it is a big change, you know, one structure in back of another, it looks like it's done well, aesthetically pleasing, I think, as one member already said. And he is having letters of support, especially from immediate or butters, so that weighs a lot in favor in my mind.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Delisle?
I'm going to have to take an opposing viewpoint from my two colleagues. I think that while there certainly is not going to be the addition of a new non-conformity, I think that this may in fact be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood based on the fact that, among other things, it is a very large addition, as we heard, larger than the addition, the initial structure. I think that presents a problem when we consider the size, the scale, the massing, the volume of the proposed addition, relative not only to the structure itself, but relative to the other structures on Oakland Street, Monroe Street, Jackson Avenue, or excuse me, Jackson Street. I think that you're getting into a pretty large place for that area. And yeah, there are some that are big, but you know, to call out that data that was presented to us on Slides 9 and 10, that required almost a walk of the whole street. So I think we're kind of, we're kind of picking and choosing our data points to get the result we want on that. So I think I'm going to have trouble supporting this.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Ms. Webb?
I'm in support of this application. I think, you know, the area is zoned for this kind of use. The lot can accommodate it. It's been presented in a very aesthetically pleasing way. You know, they're using many of the details on the existing home. And I really, I have no objection to this. I think it fits well within the neighborhood. And as Attorney Mead pointed out with her comparative analysis of the neighborhood, that there are similar-sized projects, or similar-sized structures and uses in the neighborhood.
Yeah, I'll say that, and this is Rob Champetti, I'll just say that I agree with the majority opinion that seems to be forming, that it is, you know, a lot of moving parts, of course, but it doesn't strike me as being substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than pre-existing non-conforming uses or structures. And I don't think there's a new non-conformity either. So I too can support it. With that, do we have a motion? And with any framing of a motion, could you also, whomever makes it, could you include the condition that it is subject to the DPS determination of street and sidewalk, the street and sidewalk ordinance?
This is Mark Moore. I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for non-conformities for 35 Oakland Street, file number 2020-035, with the condition that the applicant will comply with any DPS instructions with respect to street and sidewalk determination.
I'll second the motions. Rachel Webb?
Okay, motion's been made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Ms. Webb. Calling the roll, Mr. Cameron.
Yay.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
No.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That is four in the affirmative. The motion carries, and the application is approved on the special permit for non-conformities. Good luck, everyone, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you all very much, too. Have a nice evening.
Thanks. All right, guys, I'm moving to the next matter before us, which is the matter of John Caldwell III, 8 Longfellow Drive, Docent 040 of 2020, a special permit for non-conformities to construct a 24-by-40 second-story addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family use. May we hear from the applicant?
Hello, and do we have the applicant attendant? It looks like the, okay. Looks like the applicant's under a different name in the audience, that's why.
Yeah, recognizing the attendee, Melissa Boule. I hopefully pronounced that correctly. I see a hand up. Yep, so Melissa, you can speak if you'd like to unmute yourself on your end.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, good evening, everyone. Sorry about that. My name is John Caldwell. I live at 8 Longfellow Drive. And I'm requesting to build a 40 by 24, I'm sorry, 40 by 24, second-floor, second addition on my home. It'll be a four-bedroom, one-bath. And I have spoken with eight of my neighbors, two on each side, three on the front, and one in the rear. And so far, everybody is 100% on board. I just, I need the extra space for my family of five.
Okay. Could, Mr. Caldwell, do you mind, this is Rob Champetti speaking. Would you mind just going into some detail about, you know, the, and you don't have to go into great detail, but just the materials you plan to use and such? I think we see the plan, so we know what it's supposed to look like when it's. If you're sending a little detail for us, and then we can move things along for you.
Absolutely. So I plan on staying within the. Absolutely. Um, so I plan on staying within the current footprint of twenty-four by forty. I'm just gonna go straight up. It'll have, you know, hardy plank siding, cement board siding, which I've already added to my garage. And that'll, the entire house will be, that'll have that. And, uh, all, all the windows will be replaced with Anderson four hundred series, two-over-one, um, terratone colored windows, um, which so far, from everybody in the neighborhood who I've spoken with, they all really like that idea. Um, and the trim will be PVC trim. And it'll be ICAO, um, roofing on it, but it's a very basic addition. Um, it's not gonna be, uh, overly fancy or overly high or anything like that. It's gonna be very, uh, fairly modest. My neighbors to my left, if you're looking at the house from the street, um, went up a couple of years ago. It'll look similar to theirs, but I, I believe shorter and not as large overall. And, yeah, it's, it's, it's very basic. It's not gonna be anything too fancy, but I think it'll fit within the neighborhood very well. And it'll be a substantial upgrade to my current, um, look of my house, which hasn't really been upgraded since the sixties. So, I think overall it, it'll be an upgrade in general.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Caldwell. Um, we're gonna move on to the next segment of the hearing and, uh, we'll ask for anyone who wishes to speak in support of the application. Uh, if you do, please just raise your hand. Seeing, uh, no one, uh, raising their hand, anyone wish to speak in opposition? Seeing no hands raised, uh, we can close that section of the hearing and move to questions from the board. Any members of the board wish to pose any questions for, uh, for Mr. Caldwell?
Uh, Mr. Caldwell, this is Mr. Cameron. Um, quick question. So how many, um, bedrooms and bathrooms are there now? And how many will be there if you do this addition?
So right now, there's one bathroom, three bedrooms. And I'm currently looking to add four bedrooms upstairs with a one full bath. And hopefully in the near future, I'll, I'll be able to reconfigure the downstairs, but at the moment, it's gonna stay the same. And I'll just, I, they won't be used as bedrooms. I'll probably use it as an office and a playroom for my children, but.
Okay, so right now it's three bedrooms and one bath. And how many will it be? You, you, you've said four. Will you have four in total when all is said and done?
No, upstairs is, I'm adding four upstairs for the full bath. Yep. And then downstairs, I would eventually like to just maybe remove some closets and just use it as an office or
Gotcha, gotcha.
That's all.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, any further questions from the board?
Mr. Caldwell, this is Mr. Moore. Um, you know, plans look very reasonable here. I just had a question on the eight neighbors that were all on board. And you mentioned, if you're looking at the front of your house, I'm just not sure which way the numbers run. Uh, so if you look at the front of the house, the neighbor to your, your left has the bigger of the houses abutting you when you're facing the house, did the neighbor to your right, if I'm facing your house, uh, sign off on this?
Yep, um, the neighbor to my right is Elena Amano. Um, she, uh, is very, she's older. Um, but he, she has verbally spoken to me multiple times and told me that she is on board for everything I'm doing. And she loves everything I've done so far because it's, it, it looks substantially nicer than what has been there. So
Perfect.
And also the, the gentleman to the right of her told me this. So.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else wish to, um, ask any questions of Mr. Caldwell? Hearing none, we will close that portion of the hearing and move to
Yeah, sorry. I, I clicked in a little late there. Mr. Caldwell, I was just curious, um, what number of the, of the houses in the area are, are, are ranch as opposed to, to two-story, uh, two-story homes?
Okay, so four Longfellow is, is a colonial, six Longfellow is a ranch. Um, eight Longfellow, which is currently a ranch. And then ten Longfellow is now a colonial as well. Um, and then the two, uh, across the street from me are also ranches. On Elizabeth, on each, either corner of Elizabeth. And yep, and I, I'm not sure if it's one Longfellow is, is a colonial as well. So I have three Colonials directly in the vicinity of my house. On one, um, direct right side of mine, if you're looking out at the street and one, two houses away.
Okay, I understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, anyone else, uh, wish to pose a question for Mr. Caldwell? Okay, hearing none, uh, we'll close that section of the, uh, of the hearing and go to deliberations. Since we're deliberating a special permit for nonconformities, the board must find two prongs, uh, of the test and standard review, which is that there's no addition of a new nonconformity. Uh, and also that the application will not be, uh, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing nonconforming use and structure. When considering that, the board may use factors such as size, scale, massing, volume as compared to other structures in the neighborhood. This is under nine B two of the new report zoning ordinance. And I'll also note that the application does not appear to trigger the tree and sidewalk ordinance. So there's no, uh, need for us to, uh, to address that section. We'll just go through the batting order, um, on deliberations. Uh, Mr. Cameron?
Uh, yes, I would be in favor of this proposal.
Great, thank you. Mr. Moore?
Uh, yeah, I, I concur, uh, no new nonconformities and the, having checked the neighborhood and, and then heard from the applicant that there is definitely a mix of, of homes, ranch to Colonials on the street. This is not gonna be an outrageous addition for, uh, for that area in, in my opinion. So I don't see it being more detrimental with respect to size and mass. So I can be in support. And again, he has supportive of his immediate abutters, which is always a plus.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Moore. Uh, Mr. Delisle, your thoughts?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I would concur with Mr. Moore. No new conformity, uh, non, new, no new nonconformity being added here and, uh, not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood as we have a mix of Colonials and ranches in, in the immediate vicinity. So I think that, uh, you know, this project going up a story here is certainly not gonna be, uh, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Ms. Webb?
I agree with my, uh, fellow ZVA members. Um, there's no increase in the footprint here. And there's no, um, addition of new, any new nonconformities. So I'm in support of this proposal.
Okay, I agree as well. Um, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mark Moore, I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the special permit for nonconformities for Eight Longfellow Drive, uh, number twenty twenty dash zero four zero.
Second, Mr. Cameron.
Okay, the motion's made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Cameron. Uh, Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yeah.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That is, uh, five in the affirmative. The eyes have it, the motion carries. And, uh, good luck to you, Mr. Caldwell. Your, uh, your application's been approved.
Thank you, everyone, and have a great night.
We have a great night as well.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to the, uh, last, uh, matter on our docket this evening. Uh, this is the application of William Barrett, uh, three Q Street. Dock at zero four one, uh, of twenty twenty, a special permit for nonconformities to renovate and expand, uh, expand resulting in an upward extension of a pre-existing nonconforming single-family home. Uh, may we hear from Mr. Barrett?
Yes, hello, can you hear me now?
We can, Mr. Barrett. Um, you can
Chairman and all board members. Um, yes, um, I am here representing Mark Drago. He's the owner of the property. Um, and this is a proposed reconstruction of three Q Street. This street is currently developed for the one and three quarter, three quarter, three-quarter story home. And there's a wood pile foundation under the existing dwelling currently. The lot, according to recent surveys, forty-seven eighty-five. This is, this existing home has eleven hundred and four square feet under roof. It is on piles, however, the home is entirely skirted to the ground. The existing lot coverage is fifteen hundred and twenty square feet or thirty-one point seven percent. The owner of the property also owns the two lots on the other side of Q Street. And if you could bring up the site plan, I think it's, uh, I'm not seeing it near a line of, lands, is it number three? What about that? Yeah, right there. Okay, so on the other side, Q Street, there, there was two lots, now combined into one because he's purchased those lots. Um, may compile another forty-seven hundred and five square feet. Q Street is an unimproved way that cannot be reached by vehicle or as a pedestrian, as there are structural impediments along the way. For instance, the abutting neighbor, as you can see, uh, to the east has a structure that crosses over Q Street. Talk about the work that they like to do here. This project started out as a remodeling of an existing structure. After the owner dug into the project, he determined he would like to add a second floor or a portion of that over the second floor. Thereby, this application for special permit for not, not, not conformities. The new scope of work is to add to the second floor, um, over a portion of the existing structure, not the entire, uh, existing structure. All new living areas will be located entire, entirely over that existing structure. So nothing on the ground floor will be touched, um, as far as expanding the building. The existing fireplace chimney will increase from four square feet to ten square feet of coverage. Uh, we'll be moving the rear door, exit door from the east wall to the west wall. Due to this action, that access will have a small platform step of approximately eighteen square feet at its entrance. Previously, there was the basement access in the same location. That access will be removed as well as the concrete wall it was built on. Uh, we will be removing three hundred square feet of constant concrete slab that's between the two buildings. You can see it's labeled there. And that will reduce the lot coverage from thirty-one seven down to twenty-one nine. As a result of this expansion, the building height will increase from thirteen five to twenty point three. This is well below the potential height under the zoning ordinance, as you know. We'll be increasing the second floor script, square footage by four hundred and nineteen square feet. On the interior, we are keeping the two bedrooms. Um, currently it's one on the second floor, one on the first floor. We will be moving one of those bedrooms to the second floor and adding a bathroom on that second floor. Intensity of use would be the same under this proposal. Given the fact stated, uh, above, it is obligated to propose changes will not be more detrimental to the area or to the piad since the area is surrounded by homes of similar design and structure. In fact, in spite of these changes, this home will be significantly smaller in structure than most of the surrounding homes. The additional square footage will not change the distances to the lot lines as they want. It will be entirely over the existing structure. The existing structure is a one and a half story home and will be, will be making it a full two-story home. The new building height will be at twenty, twenty point three feet. Given these changes, this building will still be significantly smaller than most of the buildings in this area. Q Street, P Street, S Street, um, is the surrounding areas. We believe that, given these changes, the impact is very low, uh, by adding the second floor, increasing that, uh, level, second floor. Uh, we were making improvements a lot by removing non-pore structures and by planting the dune grass. At this point, we'd ask the board to act in the affirmative to issue a special permit for the work proposed in this application. And that'll be it. If you have any questions, I'd love to answer them for you.
Okay, uh, thank you, Attorney Barrett. Uh, and, um, do we have anyone who wishes to speak in the, uh, in support of this application? Seeing no hands, uh, any members of the, um, uh, any members of the attendees, audience wish to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing no hands, I'll close that segment of the hearing and move to questions from the board. Um, any questions for, uh, for members of the ZVA?
Uh, this is member Cameron. I have a question. Um, so how many bedrooms are there right now? And how many would be if this proposal is approved?
There are currently two bedrooms, one downstairs, one upstairs, and there will be continued, uh, two bedrooms, both of them upstairs.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Moore, any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Barrett, this is Mr. Moore. Um, you, you mentioned that it's, that, and I'm just, just curiosity right now, it could be brief. Uh, it's unreachable. Yet it has, it lists parking spaces. Can you explain that? How that work?
Yeah, and if you go back to the slide plan, um, pay, uh, paying three, you'll see an easement coming in from P Street. You can't see P Street on there, but you see, uh, easement right below the house. That comes in from P Street. So your access is from P Street because an easement provided by the existing house to the right of that easement.
Now I see it. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, um, any, uh, further questions? Mr. Delisle?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Barrett, could you, um, we, we walked through this on an earlier, uh, application. Could you walk me through the, the FAR and the increase in the FAR? Because I think that we end up in the proposed dimensional controls going over the, uh, the required, uh, twenty-five percent for the FAR. Could you take me through that, how that works?
Yeah, the existing, uh, FAR is twenty-two point one. The proposed is thirty point nine, um, percentage points. Required dimensional controls are twenty-five, as you know, um, which, uh, is the reason we're, we're here before the void, looking for, um, the special permit for nonconformities, increase in nonconformities.
Any other? Could I, uh, ask to follow up in there? Could you just go, go through with me the, uh, the existing floor, uh, area and the proposed floor area?
Yeah, and if you could bring up the existing floor plan? Okay, the, the top plan is your, is your existing plan, uh, of the building. Um, as you can see, you've got a kitchen area out to the street side of the easement side of the lot. The family room, um, pretty much takes up the whole other side of that building structure. And then you've got a small bedroom with a bathroom, um, on the east side of, of the structure. This room to the, um, Queen Street side, um, apparently it was a porch at one point, um, was, was now incorporated into the living area.
Hey, what's the total area of that?
It's eight hundred and fifty-five square feet. Same proposed as, as it will be, um, in the, same existing as it will be in the proposed plan.
And, okay, so is the, the FAR is going up because of the, the additional second story structure?
It's all upstairs. And if you bring up the second floor plan, um, you'll see the, there's no bedrooms, um, or, or the existing plan. Uh, you can see there's a bedroom downstairs. In the proposed plan, you will see that there is no bedroom, um, on the first floor. There are two bedrooms upstairs.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Webb, any questions?
No, I have no questions. Thank you.
I, I have no questions either. Um, so we'll close that portion of the, uh, the hearing and move to deliberations. And again, this is a special permit for nonconformity. So the board must find that the proposed changes will not cause the structure to be within, uh, I'm sorry. The, the board must, uh, find that the application will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing nonconforming use or structure or the piad, because this is in Plum Island. And, um, I will also note that the application does not appear to trigger the tree and sidewalk ordinance. There is one side note that we should note, and that is that, uh, the applicant has submitted to the Conservation Commission and has yet to receive a DEP number. Um, and the commission can't issue their order of conditions without the DEP number. So we would, in order to proceed, make, uh, any approval, subject to, um, the influence of a DEP number and, and the issuance of an order of conditions. But that's kind of, that kind of goes without saying, and I just noted, uh, for the record. All right, uh, so we'll go into the, uh, the, we'll go into the, uh, the little batting order for deliberations. Uh, Mr. Cameron, uh, what are your thoughts?
I'm, I'm gonna pass. I'd like to hear what my fellow members think.
Okay, uh, Mr. Moore?
Let's jump off here. Um, well, given that my bathroom argument was taken care of earlier with respect to the intensity portion of the evening. You, you know, the, the biggest concern, you know, it's, it's no new non-conformities, I guess, except the FAR increase. Uh, but that primarily comes from adding a second floor, which the pie odd permits. So that's all that's really, that's where the math is coming from, so. As proposed, I think it's, it's an improvement. I don't see it being any more detrimental to the neighborhood, given the, the, from what I can tell, or the, uh. Buildings in the surrounding area, uh, at that area of the island, so, um. I'm basically in support.
Okay, uh, Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I, I can support this, this application. I, I don't see any, uh, any, any real problems here. I appreciate Mr. Barrett walking me through the math, um, with respect to the, to the FAR, um, calculation. So I, I think that, uh. That this application, uh, appears to be a, a good application and I can support that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle, Ms. Webb.
Uh, I'm in support of this application. I really don't have anything additional to, to add. My colleagues have all said it previously.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. I, uh, Rob Champetti, I, I concur with, uh, what seems to be the majority and can support it as well. Uh, circling back to Mr. Cameron.
Yeah, uh, I agree with all that. Uh, I'll be supporting.
Okay, very good. Do we have a motion?
Um, I'll make motion. This is Mr. Cameron, uh, motion to approve the special permit for non-conformities for three Q Street, file number twenty twenty dash zero four one.
Second to Mr. Moore.
Okay, motion's made by Mr. Cameron and seconded by Mr. Moore. I'll call the, uh, roll for, oh, Mr. Cameron.
Yay.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
And, uh, Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The motion carries. The application, uh, is approved for the special permit for non-conformities. Uh, good luck to you, uh, Mr. Barrett, and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and board members. I appreciate it. Have a good night.
Have a good evening, sir. So members of the, uh, zoning board of appeals and those, uh, in attendance, that concludes the business of, and the agenda for the ZBA. Meeting for May twenty-six, twenty twenty. Uh, with no further business on our docket, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second, Mr. Cameron.
Motion's made and seconded, uh, all those in favor, you can just respond in the affirmative by, you can all say aye, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The eyes have it, the motion carries, uh, and the, uh, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening and thanks very much for the patience.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone.
Bye-bye, guys.